I'd like to call the meeting, the special meeting of the Parks Recreation and Community Service Commission to order. Could we have your report? Or a roll call, I guess.
Commissioners, Scott Petian.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Rob Fogel.
Here.
Sharkey is absent. President Khan.
I'm here, but I'm no longer the president.
I absolutely apologize.
Sure.
Khan.
I'm here.
Is present. The agenda for the May 26, 2011 special meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on Wednesday, May 25, 2011. Item two, oral communications.
I have no cards, so what is next?
Item three, business agenda, three A action items. Three A, one motion to note and file a report regarding a proposed facility use agreement with the Primo Foundation for the use of Stengel Field as the home field for the Glendale Angelinos baseball club, a collegiate summer wood bat team.
Mr. Duran, could we have your report?
Yes, President Rob Fogel, members of the commission. First, I'd like to apologize for the short notice and the need to call this meeting of the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission. But last summer, the department did agree in principle to enter into a facility use agreement with the Primo Foundation, which is a nonprofit corporation which owns and operates the Glendale Angelinos baseball club, known as the Angelinos, which is a collegiate summer wood bat team for the use of Stengel Field as their home field for this year and hopefully subsequent years. So on September 29, the department and the Angelinos held a press conference at Stengel Field. Then on October 5, Mr. Rivera, the owner of the team, spoke at a city council meeting about the baseball team and about the opportunity of having the team come to Glendale. And then as we got closer to finalizing the agreement, which was just in the last two or three weeks, we realized how extraordinary and out of the norm this agreement was and that we should present it to the commission and to provide the commission and any community members an opportunity to receive a presentation from Mr. Rivera and to ask any questions that anyone might have about the program and the use of the, of Stengel Field. Along these lines, we felt it was also prudent to notify the residents that live in proximity or within 500 feet of Stengel Field, to inform them about the project and to let them know who they can call if they have any questions about the project. So we also did that, and we did receive one email, which I forwarded to the commissioners. And this particular resident raised very legitimate concerns and asked what I felt were all the right questions. I did email a response immediately, and we've also called the resident, and so we are in communication and we are having a very productive dialogue. Before I turn the rest of the report and presentation to Joanne, who will get, provide some bullet points of what this program is, and then introduce Mr. Rivera for Mr. Rivera to make a presentation, I would like to say that in addition to bringing the college, in addition to bringing college All-Star caliber baseball to Glendale, we feel that it will also be a boost to the local economy as we will be hosting traveling teams that will be spending a weekend or two or three days at a time in our community. It will help our local economy, and so that was a byproduct, positive byproduct of this, of this venture. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Joanne.
Thank you, President Rob Fogel and Commissioners. The Wooden Bat League has added the Glendale Angelinos to their regular schedule of games, which will be approximately 40 home games that will be played at the Stengel Field this coming summer. The Angelinos are expected to attract approximately 500 to 600 fans. This is probably not just about as much as a high school playoff game would garner or the, our Glendale College game would garner for one of their, their better ballgames. We don't anticipate significant parking issues because, again, this would be just like a normal high school playoff game. There's plenty of parking within the outlying areas in the surrounding area around Glendale, at Verdugo Park, which is where Stengel Field is located. The residents were notified as Mr. Duran says, May 23, about today's meeting. We anticipate, we may get some questions and emails, and we hope that through this information, we can provide enough facts that they will have their questions answered by watching this broadcast. In exchange for the facility use agreement, there's going to be a five-year agreement. It's a graduated increase. The first year, it's a flat rate of $4,000, which is the normal rate that over the last three, four years, we have garnered through renting out the Stengel Field facility for other sports groups. So this is what the normal average would be, so we're going to, going to go with that rate and anticipating that as the following of the team increases and the popularity increases, each of the years, there'll be an increase in the rate that the group will pay for the use of the Stengel Field. Typically, in the months of June and July, we would generate approximately the $4,000 in revenue. The groups that normally would use the field would be the Connie Mack League, the Babe Ruth League, the months of June. Connie Mack goes into June, July. Little League is usually in June. These, we have other fields that we've been able to shift their games to and try and accommodate. A number of the, the teams that play in the Connie Mack are out-of-city teams, so hopefully they'll be able to find home games within their geographic area where they come from, which will help alleviate some of their wanting to come into play into Burbank. Typically, our, this is, this is an unusual permit because for, it's an extensive period of time. Usually, we will, we will rent fields on a day-by-day basis. This is a permit for the full June through August 15th, June 1 through August 15th, I'm sorry, August 24th. And so the average normal rate that we rent, will rent fields for on a regular basis through the year is approximately 400 a month. So we're dealing with a lot of regular permits that are regular turnover, and this is for a specific period of time, and it would be exclusive use of the field because it is an adult league, and accommodations are made for the, some of the specifics that the league requires because it is a, it is a national program under the auspices of Major League Baseball. The duration of the permit, the scope of the permit have prompted our staff to present this because it's for your note and file, and it is something that is geographically an important feature to bringing people coming into the city of Glendale. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Tony Rivera, who is the owner of the Primo Foundation and the Glendale Angelinos, and he can probably supply a bit of more information on what they plan with All-Star games and the regular games and information regarding the time on the field, the lights, and the impacts. Tony.
Great. Good afternoon. Thank you for your time, especially on such short notice. The Glendale Angelinos was brought, this is our inaugural year. We are going to be playing in the California Collegiate League. There are two leagues in America that Major League Baseball endorses and is involved with. The Cape Cod League in Massachusetts and the California Collegiate League. The California Collegiate League is now ranked number one in America. It has some of the biggest, brightest stars from all over the United States, from some of the best colleges in the country, such as LSU and Arkansas and Florida and Florida State, UCLA, USC, so on and so forth. But the caliber of play is really that of professional baseball in the respect that most of these players have been drafted already or will be drafted. So an example, right now, on our roster, we have about 12 players that have been drafted professionally already by Major League teams, and we'll probably have next week at the Major League Draft, probably another six or seven players that will be drafted professionally. Some will sign and go out, and some will continue playing, you know, their college timeout and aspire, I guess, to go in the first round instead of the fifth round. We have teams from all over the state right now. You know, we play Santa Barbara, St. Louis, Abyspo. Major League Baseball has their own team out of the academy in Compton. Mike Socia owns a team. He's the manager of the Los Angeles Angels. He owns a team in Caneo Oaks. So it's, it's a league that's been around for 29 years, and, you know, the great thing about the league is in 29 years, they haven't ever experienced a rainout. And the same thing can't be said for the Cape Cod League. We have a national broadcast on Fox coast-to-coast. This year, it'll take place July 13. It'll be the only baseball game broadcast in America that day. It's the day after the Major League All-Star game, and it'll go into 67 million homes. So it's a huge broadcast, and we were fortunate enough to have that All-Star Game awarded to Glendale this year. So not only will there be great baseball, but there'll be an opportunity for people all over the country to take a look at our beautiful city, and, and there'll be a lot of, you know, B-roll film, and then they'll talk about the city of Glendale. Obviously, we'll, we had a meeting with George Lucas yesterday, and he has a new movie coming out called Red Tail, which is about the Black Fighter Squadron back in World War II. He's been working on this film for 20 years, and there's a very, very good chance that they will debut that movie and bring the cast in for the All-Star Game and maybe even, you know, bring some of the props in as well. So, you know, this is not low caliber baseball, and it's certainly the best that, you know, we can find out here. I think that it's evident, evidenced by several of the Angelinos that we brought into Glendale this year to play, that decided to transfer out to Glendale College. And of course, you know, the story is pretty much out there that Glendale, for the first time in the 87-year school history, went all the way to the state finals. It's just never happened before. And so I would like to believe that that was extremely due to, you know, the great coaching and, and, you know, some great players that we were able to bring from our team that were already rostered on our team into Glendale. So we, we brought college students in, and we brought some really good baseball players in as well. You know, 500, 600 people a game is kind of where we're hoping to get, you know. That would be really, really nice. We're going to start our games at 6:30. I think that we'll probably be done about 10 o'clock. It's a nine-inning game. You know, the noise level, I think, is going to be that of a high school, you know, game or a high school playoff game or Glendale College game. I don't anticipate anything other than that. It's a baseball game. But we do run it as a minor league type operation, which means that we do a lot of community outreach. We bring in the little league kids to, you know, run around the field and, and, you know, get involved in, I turned it on silence, sorry, get, and get involved in the, the inning by inning promotions that we do. So if it's run around the bases, the dizzy bat, that's, we just try to make it a little bit more fun and interesting than, you know, what people are used to seeing out there. And obviously, good food is extremely important, and, you know, we're very confident that we'll be able to, you know, make it a great night out at the ballpark. That's going to be, you know, extremely affordable considering we're giving our tickets out to the community and, and, you know, we just think that it's going to be a really safe place for people to enjoy family entertainment on an every-night basis, or at least every night where we have a game. And, you know, I think we've got a really good coaching staff. I think that we, our goal is to bring a championship to Glendale, and I believe that we can do that this year.
So I think I covered everything.
Something that I would like to add, President Rob Fogel and Commissioners, is the, the concern may be with the sound, but again, we're, the levels should be approximately the high, the high school and the collegiate level. The All-Star Game, there will be, because it's broadcast, because we're, there will be TV there, the group will have to get a sound permit, so they will apply to the city clerk for a sound permit for that specific because of the filming. So the decibel levels are, he, they will project the decibel levels, they will, they will put their permit request in. The city clerk's office will take that, and the group will have to take it through the neighborhood so that the neighbors are signing off on that as far as the decibel level. So that should be monitored, which is nothing unusual. We do that now with any permits that are in any of our facilities. We deal with the sound permits and the decibel level, and the neighborhood signs off on that. So that should alleviate that, that issue. We talked about the parking. Staff, as usual, goes and checks out other cities to see what their concerns were. So when this was first proposed to us, we checked out a few of the cities that, that host a Wooden Bat League team. The Palm Springs Power is not in this particular league. They're in another league, Wooden Bat League. But their concern with the league was, with the team, was the added use of electricity. So the utility rates went up because of the electricity, but we understand Palm Springs is a little warmer in the summer. They also have air-conditioned offices for the team to use, and in our case, we do not have that. There's no air conditioning at that facility. Use would be normal because our lights are on every night anyway during the summer because there's somebody playing on those fields every night, so there would be no added electricity at that end. So where our, their concern was electricity. Other than that, they welcome them into the community, but as we know, Palm Springs is a tourist location. It's a destination point. And I believe that's what their goal is, to make Glendale a destination point, but we don't anticipate any extra charges regarding utilities on our end. So we're going to be assigning staff the first few weeks and then do a regular, shift someone over there on a regular basis to basically audit and monitor and make sure everything is going okay for the group as well as for the neighborhood.
Okay. I'm sure there are questions. Who would like to start?
I'll start. Hello. Thanks for being here. Really appreciate your efforts for the city. I think that national broadcasting these games are going to put Glendale on the map nationwide, and that's, we really appreciate that. I have a couple of quick questions for you. As far as the practices go, when are they going to be and what are the hours of the practices? Are you going to have your practice on the same field or?
Well, we'll have our practices on the same field, but generally speaking, you know, you're playing every day, so you really don't have time to practice other than you coming in, get your batting practice, and do all your pre-game stuff, and your stretching, and your, you know, all these things, and preparing the field in the morning and just getting everything ready to go. So practice is very limited. We're, you know, we are having some limited practices right now, but, I mean, we start playing next Wednesday night. So Wednesday and Thursday will be a dry run, so to speak. We're not even telling anybody about it, really. And then Friday will be opening night, and we hope that you folks will all come out and bring your families and enjoy a night at the park.
This Friday?
Next Friday.
Next Friday, okay. And you mentioned the tickets. How much are the tickets? How much are they going to?
Well, the, the ticket value is written at $5, but we are giving the tickets out. So Major League Baseball kind of regulates some of the stuff that we do, but, you know, our goal is to, to, to get it in a situation where we're just bringing a lot of fans out, and hopefully we can make, you know, some money to pay the bills off of the concession stands and that type of stuff, and sponsors and everything else. You know, the first year is always going to be tough because nobody knows who we are or what we're doing or anything like that, but, you know, they're going to see some of the best baseball in America. And so I think that we will create a fan base, and I think that people want to come out all the time. You know, the Cape Cod League does very similar situation where they bring maybe 2,000, 3,000 fans, but their facilities are a lot bigger. And then some are a little bit smaller, and, but they try to just give the tickets away.
And how many players join the Glendale College team? Do you know by any chance?
The Glendale College team?
Yeah.
From our team?
From all two.
I think probably about 12, 12 or 15 maybe. I mean, it's quite a bit, you know. Again, that's, they only won seven games last year, and then they have the best season of their history. So I think that our players will make an impact. And, and really what, and I think it's important, that's a good question, because I think it's important that the commission understands that as we go forward, you know, our goal is to work very closely with the Glendale College, which I think we have. And, and, you know, what happens is so often is that you get players that go to Division One school, and they just don't like the environment, or their grades aren't that great, and perhaps they need to, or it's just expensive and they can't afford, because baseball scholarships are very, very limited. And so, you know, we've got probably about six or seven kids right now coming in, and one kid that is probably going to go in the first round next year is a 98 mile an hour left-handed pitcher. That's at LSU. That may end up coming to Glendale College next year. But several of our players are already coming in and looking, and an Arkansas left-handed pitcher at possibility of leaving their Division One school for whatever reason and then staying here and playing in Glendale next year.
Great. Thank you.
I'll also welcome you.
Thank you.
And appreciate what you're doing. Having played baseball for many years, I am excited to see some of the games.
Right. Professionally?
Oh, of course not. Not, not anywhere near that level, believe me. But I did have, I did have quite a number of questions. You addressed some of them. Staff addressed some of them, but some of them were not. One of the items, and I understand you're just getting this going, so this is a, the way I'm reading the staff report is it's a year, it's an annual agreement.
Sure.
And then you're going to see how it goes, and the next year, you'll see how it goes, and the city also can weigh in one way or another. One of the things that was talked about was the potential to sell alcoholic beverages. And I don't know if that was going to be for this year or if that is in future years, but nothing has been said about that.
Yeah, we're not selling any alcohol this year.
Okay.
And we'll take a look at what happens next year, you know, when the season's over and we can all huddle up and, you know, decide if beer is a possibility or not. I think that, you know, you just got to see what your fan base is and make sure that, you know, people are there for the right reasons to see a game. And, you know, it's not a night of drinking in the ballpark, so, you know. I feel very confident that if, in fact, we get down to that, where we are selling alcohol, it'll be extremely controlled and done very, very professionally.
Yeah, so at this time, we're not looking at doing that.
We'll not be selling any alcohol this year.
As it relates to just, just in terms of the way it operates, do you have security guards that come out? I'm thinking when, sometimes when you go to a ballpark, Dodger Stadium, and I understand this is not, not anywhere like that, but, but just our Angels Stadium, it doesn't matter. Is there security guards that you guys employ, or is it just kind of, how do you control the crowd, so to speak?
Well, we have interns that come in, the sports management interns, and everybody, you know, has roles. And we are, in fact, doing an outreach today to the community senior citizen centers of, you know, see if some of the senior citizens want to come in and do ticket-taking and that type of stuff. You know, the great thing about minor league baseball is, is it's so family-driven, where Major League Baseball is so corporate and, and wealth-driven. You know, last year, minor league baseball outsold the NBA, the NFL, and the NHL combined. So, you know, it's extremely popular because it's very affordable, and it's a heck of a night out at the ballpark. You don't see, what takes place at a minor league field doesn't take place at a major league field. Major league field, you play the game, they don't want any interruptions between innings because they want you to go and buy hot dogs and beer and all that other stuff. You know, every inning, we have something fun going on and, you know, getting the fans involved and, you know, doing things like, you know, finding, you take all the kids and you get their shoes and you dump them in the center field, and then they've got, you know, whoever finds their shoes first and get them on in time wins, you know, ice cream, you know. So fun stuff like that.
Kids tonight, yeah.
Yeah. Just a couple more questions I had. You mentioned that, that you.
If, if, if I may interrupt, because the sale of alcohol beverages is a very important issue. So President Rob Fogel, Commissioner Khan, the agreement does stipulate that after the first year, if, if the city exercises its option to extend the agreement another year, that the Primo Foundation may submit a request to sell alcohol, and then that, that request or that permit will be routed through the city departments, and it will be considered. But if it's okay with you, I'd like to call Mike Grant, who is the Senior Assistant City Attorney.
Sure.
Because we, we do currently have requirements built into the agreement should, should the sale of alcohol become effective. Mike, would you mind addressing it?
Mr. President and Commissioner, thank you. Actually, the police department worked with Mr. Rivera, and they came up with a whole bunch of requirements. And we placed that in the agreement that in the second year, that after approval through various departments, commission, and the city manager, that if he does sell alcohol, there will be a separate beer garden. They will require security personnel. It will be, have to be more than just volunteers. And so they have, the police department set up a whole bunch of requirements. They work through the chief and also Tom Lorenz, and so the requirements are reflected in the agreement.
Thank you. You had mentioned that, I saw in the staff report, well, you had mentioned that you guys go from about 6:30 to about 10 is the times of the games, and then the staff report, it said that the games must end by 10:00 PM. What do you do if you have a game that's, you know, not, not completed, or it's tied, or what, you know, you have the bases loaded and it's 10 o'clock?
Well, if it's 10 o'clock, then you just schedule a day where it's going to, no different in arena, you schedule it where you will pick the game up.
So you would, do you have games every day, every night?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to see these teams again. So, I mean, should that happen, you might say, okay, in our next series, or when we play at your ballpark, we're going to pick it up in the 12th inning, and the score remains from 10.
Whatever it is.
And, you know, so whatever the score is at that time. You know, I, I think that, I mean, we didn't have one in, one, last year, we were in the Southern California Collegiate League, and, and, you know, we didn't have any extra inning games whatsoever. And, and one thing I did wanted to note is the All-Star Game has been moved to 6 o'clock. So, you know, so we'll have plenty of time to, you know, to do the dignitaries and have fun and that type of stuff and be done in plenty of time.
One of, that was one of the things I was going to suggest, is that if you find that you are running up against that 10 o'clock time, is to start a half hour earlier. Whether it's 6:30 or 6, I don't think it matters. I think it does matter if it's 10 or 10:30, though.
No, I, I agree with you 100%. I, I think that, you know, part of the issue of why you would start at 6:30 or, or 7 o'clock is not because that's the perfect game time. It's probably because the sun is still beaming into Stengel Field, and, you know, there's not a whole lot of protection, you know, for the fans. So, you know, the last thing you want people doing is coming in at 6 o'clock, and they get there at 5:30, and the sun's just blasting in their face, and they say, honey, let's go home. It's just too hot here.
Right.
So that's the whole purpose of the 7 o'clock game, which we initially were going to do, and then when we worked through the noise ordinance, we moved it to 6:30.
Okay.
And, you know, I mean, average typical game is about two and a half hours. So, you know, I mean, you hope you're out of there by 9, 9:30, but, you know, you pad some time just in case there's extra innings.
One last question, and then, as it relates to exclusive use of the field, your games are in the evenings?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, not all of them, but most of them.
Okay. And then you also have sports camps or different things?
Correct.
And that's kind of during the day?
Yes.
And is it, is it pretty much every day, or is there?
Well, it will be in the following year. I think that this year, we're still, you know, we know, we have a lot of work to do on that field. So, I think that our days are going to be spent, you know, with the kids, you know, really getting the field back into shape.
Shape.
And, you know, I also think that, you know, we want to do some community outreach camps where kids can come in, little league teams and that type of stuff, and do some, you know, free camps and that type of stuff. And, again, you know, we want the kids to become fans of the Angelinos versus the Dodgers, and, you know, we believe that we can achieve that.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes. I sort of come from the other end of the baseball spectrum, from the player to hardly the watcher. But this sounds quite fun. I like the idea of all the shoes in the middle of the, of the field and, and the kids getting out there and looking for their shoes. So, welcome, and we're glad you're considering Glendale and would like to be part of the community. So, I just have a couple of questions that kind of are back to the, the noise level and the time level. And this one is really more for staff. When we've had other teams that have played on this field in the evenings, have, has 10 o'clock been their normal time to stop?
Yes, Commissioner Patrick, the, the, all permits are scheduled up through, up 8:00, 9:00, 10:00, whatever the use request is. About 10:00 is it, that's the maximum. And then the lights will stay on just a little bit longer for everyone to get away and get off the field. But it's really dark out there, so everyone has learned that they really can't push past that timeframe.
Okay.
They need to get off the field. But all permits have always been until 10:00 on that field.
So, the neighborhood is kind of used to having people in the park until 10:00, and then the lights go out?
Right. Regularly through April, May, June, July, there's, and into the first part of August, because usually we will shut down August 15. This time, we're shutting down August 24.
Okay.
But regularly, those lights are on every night with somebody on that field.
Okay.
And, and one thing that I wanted to, I guess, touch on is, you know, part of going into the August 24 period is that next year, we are going to announce a National Wood Bat Tournament that will take place after the first week of August here in Glendale. So, you know, and those are, if you're familiar with the National Baseball Congress, the NBC, or some of the Little League Championships and that type of stuff, you bring teams from all over the country. And, you know, those games are being played at 9:00, 10:00 in the morning, and, you know, you're just going game after game after game. But you bring in, you know, you know, players and families from all over the country. And I, I mean, I think that if we can get that going next year, it's going to be a huge economic impact for the city. And if you go to Jamestown, you know, I coached in the World Series in Little League, not Little League, but the Senior Babe Ruth in 97 and 98. And, you know, I mean, there, you go to Jamestown, New York, and they're putting on parades in the community, and it's just, everything is just, you know, a week to two weeks of just amazing baseball and community involvement. And really, it hasn't been done on the West Coast. If the NBC draws 8,000 people per game, well, we can't fit 8,000 people in here. But, you know, it'd be nice to see if we could really, we have Occidental College as well for next year, so then, because you'd need two fields, and it's five minutes away. And then with the final games being here, and hopefully, I mean, we're talking to both Fox and ESPN. Fox has already said they want to do it, and ESPN is saying, don't, don't listen to Fox, we want to do it. So, again, you know, these things just create, you know, great opportunities for, you know, people that are living in Pasadena and other areas that may have never considered Glendale as a place to live, to just say, wow, you know, what a great place, let's pop over there.
Just for my clarification, how old are the, are the young men that participate in this league? Is, do they start at 18? I'm a little confused between the league and the college.
Well, they're, they're college players. So, you have 18-year-olds to 24-year-olds, 23-year-olds.
Okay. So, these guys play for college someplace?
Absolutely.
And then they come to this league during, when the college season is not on? Is that what goes on?
Yeah. What happens is this, Commissioners, is that every major college in America sends their players out to specific leagues on an annual basis. So, if you're playing at UCLA, that college coach is going to say, you four guys are going to the Northwoods League, you four guys are going to Alaska, you four guys. So, it's an assignment by the colleges to the leagues. And it's based on relationships. And so, in January of this past year, or this 2011, we have, every January, we have what we call the ABCA, the American Baseball Coaches Association Convention. 10,000 baseball coaches attend this convention. This past year, it was in Nashville, Tennessee. Next year, in 2012, it'll be in Anaheim for the first time. And so, at that point, not only are you going through all of the convention stuff and, you know, the speakers and everything else, but you're also networking with college coaches. So, I mean, it's a process where you're actually, you know, meeting with a John Savage from UCLA and say, John, you know, I need blah, 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 you know, four pitchers and a shortstop. And he says, well, we can send you this guy, this guy, this guy, this guy. And then, and again, it's, it's, you're giving back. John, what are your, what are your needs right now for next year? What do you, I mean, we've got coaches calling us for players in 2013 now. And so, you know, it's really a process. This is a very serious, you know, league. And, and the Alaskan League is a great league. It used to be the league many years ago. And the Cape Cod League has really been, you know, the, the league that has set the bar. And, you know, we just haven't made a whole lot of noise in California. We just did things silently, and now we're ranked the number one summer league in America. And now, everybody's saying, my God, you know, what did we miss? So, now all the college coaches are just begging. I mean, I'm getting 10 to 15 calls a day from college coaches. Can you take one more kid? Can you, you know, this one is going to summer school and he happens to live in, you know, California. We were sending him to Alaska, but now he has to do summer school, you know, can you add him to your roster? So...
Okay. So, these, these kids are all in, are all taking classes in, in college?
They have to be college players.
You have to be patient with me. I'm just trying to understand how this, this works. So, so they're getting extra, extra training by coming to your league when they go back to school?
Yes.
And then when they're in school, they're getting extra training to come back to your league, and eventually, they hope to go to the major leagues?
Yes.
Okay. I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll stop while I'm ahead.
That's a very good analogy, Commissioner.
I'm also very excited. I, I really think that minor league baseball is the, the best baseball there is. And what's really going to be exciting about this, this league and this team at single field is what makes, what I think makes minor league baseball exciting is that you're probably about as far from the batter as practically you and I are.
Yes.
And so, you really get to see the, the whole, the whole feeling of the game. And I'm very, very excited about it. And I was going to read, or address, the one letter that we received from Daniel Gold, but I think that we've answered all of his questions. And I know you've talked to him, so we'll just file it for the record.
Commissioner, President Rafoel, I have not talked with him because I don't have his phone number, but we, we're trading emails, so I hope to connect with him shortly to basically go over each point.
But I think that if he watches this, the, his first point, and the major point he made was the increased lights. And from what we've heard today, there are no increased lights, or really, not that much more in the increased area of noise also. The one thing that I would like staff to possibly look into is for the All-Star Game, at least even though it shouldn't go any later because it is starting earlier, the one thing I would be embarrassed about is if at 10:05, the lights go out because we've had to end the game. And I think that would not make the city of Glendale look real good. So, I think that's something that we need to maybe talk to the neighbors about for that particular game, and just make sure that we have some flexibility that they know what's going on. Because, I mean, like the Rose Float, it's something, this is something that's going to highlight Glendale. And if we have to turn the lights out because of a curfew, I think we'd all be embarrassed.
That's a very good point, Commissioner. President?
Call me anything you'd like. Except late dinner.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're very confident that we'll get through the, you know, four hours is a very big pad of time. But you, you make a great point. Obviously, it happened at the All-Star Game for Major League Baseball four or five years ago, and it was a disaster for Major League Baseball. And, you know, maybe we'll have to just huddle up together and say, all right, we're going to, you guys are going to throw the game.
Well, if you're going to, if you're going to start, maybe you start with the dignitaries and everything else at 5:30?
Oh, we will.
Okay.
The game, the physical broadcast goes on the air nationally at 6:00.
Okay. Yeah, four hours should be plenty of time.
And they'll be doing their B-roll. We're hoping that Diana Ross is going to sing the National Anthem and, and, you know, they'll be doing their B-roll and, I mean, they cut and paste and do their stuff so quickly that it's ridiculous how quick they are.
Great. I have one more question. In terms of tie-in with the local business community, or have you given some consideration for how you're going to, maybe some sponsorships or promoting local businesses, or how they can support your league, how that would work?
Yeah, we, we've gone to a lot of the businesses and, and, you know, again, it's a first-year program, and people don't know who we are. So, you know, a lot of doors have been slammed.
Sure.
And, you know, I went to the Chamber of Commerce yesterday and wasn't able to meet with the person there. She was too busy to meet with me. I'm going to try it again after the meeting today. And, you know, our goal is, you know, we've identified a lot of corporations in this community, whether it's Nestle, or Baskin Robbins, or, you know, several other major, I mean, there's a lot of business here. And so, you know, our interns have been given the task of going to a Nestle's and saying, look, we'd like to do a Nestle's night, one night, you know, and here's 500 tickets, and you guys come out and, you know, it'll be your employees, that type of stuff. And then go to, and, and, and all the small businesses as well. And, you know, honor those businesses when they come in, you know, tonight, we want to welcome, you know, Domino's Pizza employees and that type of stuff. We also want to make sure that, from a tourist standpoint, that the hotels are given tickets on a daily basis as well, because we all know that when you're traveling into a city that you may not know that much about, or you come here and you've decided that you've wanted to spend three days in Disneyland, but after the first day, you said you'll never go there again because the lines are four hours. You know, people are going to say, what's there to do in this area? You know, well, hey, we got, you know, tickets to the Angelino's game tonight. And here they are, complimentary.
Sure.
It makes the hotel look good. It, you know, just, it's, it's going to be fun.
It sounds like you thought that through, then. I think that's a great opportunity for all-sized businesses, like you mentioned.
Yeah, we're going to try and get the Chamber of Commerce master list and, and email the heads of all those companies and say, look, we want to do a night for your corporation. How many employees do you have? We have 50. And we'll kind of just match everybody up.
Commissioner Patrick and I will be happy to help, and probably Mr. Ahern, put together a service club night. We're both involved in different service clubs, and it would be a lot of fun.
Well, yeah, we're hoping, and I still haven't gotten the answer yet, but we're hoping to do, to get the tickets out to the Glendale City employees for the opening weekend. We just think that that's probably the best thing to do. So, I don't know if there's an HR department where I can, you know, get tickets distributed so that, you know, the employees of the city can come out and, you know, I mean, it should be their weekend.
No, but by service clubs, I was talking about Rotary, Kiwanis, and those groups. We're both very, very involved.
And those groups are, are...
Huge.
Quite strong in, in Glendale. There's a lot of them and a lot of people, and that would be another way to involve the community.
Absolutely.
I think they would be quite excited about having an evening where it would be...
A family night?
Yeah, a family night.
Some of those clubs are better than others, but...
Yes, we know.
So, you are Rotary, I take it?
Yes.
And I'm Kiwanis.
Kiwanis has always been huge in baseball. And back in New York City, Kiwanis probably has one of the biggest baseball leagues in the country.
Yeah, we've always supported little league teams.
Yeah. I was a Kiwanis baseball player.
We won't, you'll still, I won't hold that against you. Are there any other questions?
Question. Speaking of all the sponsorships and everything else, where does your funding come from? I mean, by $5 a ticket, I don't think you can make that much money every game. But where does your funding come from? Where do you get your budget? And how does it work?
From, from my, my little old pocket right now.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm funding the program, you know, this year and getting it off the ground. And, you know, I've done this for 18 years. So, my pocket is used to taking that hit every year, and it hasn't changed. So, it may be just a bigger hit this year. But, you know, it's, it's, you know, my foundation, and it gives back to kids and, and kids at risk. And, you know, I've been doing this for quite some time. You know, the mandate from our foundation is kids at risk in Children's Hospital. So...
Very good.
We do.
You used the word "huddle up" a lot, and I think at the end of this hearing, I'm going to make a motion to huddle up and approve this.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from staff?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming, and...
Thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Hope to see you all at the ballpark.
Sure. Okay. I think we're, did you want to make the motion?
I have a couple of questions from staff that I made.
Okay.
Just want to quickly run it by you and see if I, if I understand the whole thing right, because I read through the, the report quickly. So, they are paying all our taxes, the property taxes that may be in, and also, there is no subleasing allowed, basically, during their, their time.
Correct.
And this is for only three months, basically, two and a half months, roughly three months.
Correct. The, the timeframe is listed within the, within it, and then we'll, we'll revisit it again for the timeframe for the next year.
And the city pays for the utilities like we, we used to pay for it. And the other people who used to, other groups who used to use the field, they still have other fields to, I just want to make sure of that, that you're not alienating other groups. They have, they have other fields to practice or have games on, the ones that used to, used to rent the place from us.
Commissioner, there is a little bit of an impact as to the, the number of, the number of games, basically because the June, the June is where the biggest impact is. However, we're, we're doing our best in the sports section to shift to, a lot of our different fields, our sports complex, all of our different fields. And we're trying to shift as much as we possibly can there. The practices, we can't quite get, we can't take care of everyone's practice time, but the games, that's our biggest isolated focus that we do, is we try to never try to impact a game. And if we can, whenever we can move a game somewhere, that's our intent, is to shift any of their games to different locations.
Okay. And the last question is the maintenance. In the, in the report, it's kind of going back and forth on that, it's contrary to what it says the page before. Are we going to maintain the field, or they are going to maintain the field?
I knew there was a reason.
Because, because they say, in the report, it says, they have to let us know if there is a, a maintenance issue. And on the other section, it says that they have to maintain it. And the other section says that we have to maintain it. I just wanted to know who's maintaining the field.
President Rafoel, Commissioners, we're going to maintain the field in the sense of, we'll mow the lawn, we'll fertilize the lawn, we'll aerify the lawn, we'll take care of the sprinkler heads. They will do the dragging of the field, the prepping of the field as far as getting ready for baseball games. If there is an issue that we need to repair, we'll take care of that. Base standards that are coming up, bad pitching mound, bad pitching rubber, bad, bad home plate, something that they find in the stands that's broken or dangerous that they've come across, that's still our facility in that respect. So, we will maintain those, those type of items. But as far as daily prepping of the field, it will be the, the league. Tony?
And, and that's pretty much what would happen no matter what, right? I mean, we, would we normally prep the field for some of the other leagues that were there? Or would they... they?
Yes. We, we, we normally for college and for baseball and for high school, we'll do the dragging of the field. We don't do, we don't ever do lining of the field ourselves. The coaches usually do all that. But we would do the dragging, um, adding of the brick dust. Uh, Tony will probably spread it. I'll probably supply it, that kind of stuff. But, uh, the manpower that he has as opposed to what I have is, uh, is greatly, there's a large disparity. So he has the people to help, uh, help do that. So anything that of a, of a repair nature, we would take care of. Anything of a daily prep that he would like to do, he'll take care of that.
And one thing that...
Can you just?
And, you know, one thing that I would like to say is, I mean, there are some kids that just don't have the ability or the wherewithal to pay the league fees that Major League Baseball regulates. And so, you know, those kids are charged with doing the grounds work and just kind of paying their way. So I physically pay their fees for them. Uh, but, you know, they have to kind of come in and, and do their part. And it may be, you know, hey, you're gonna, you're gonna be in charge of watering for the entire summer. And, you know, you're gonna be in charge of picking weeds for the entire summer. So everybody will have a job. It's, it's just ran extremely well. And I think that we've worked, uh, with Gary here, uh, over the last few months, getting stuff put together. And I think it's just gonna get a lot easier.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes. I make a motion to huddle up and approve the proposed facility use agreement with Primo Foundation for the use of Stingle Field.
Actually, what you meant to say was to note and file. Is that correct?
Note and file.
That's what I thought. I, that's what I thought he said.
You heard that well. I'll second.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Scarpetian?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Khan?
Yes.
Sharkey is absent. And President Rafoval?
Play ball. Yes.
For item...
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
We do have another item on the agenda and that's just Commission staff comments.
Are there any?
No comments here.
Nope.
Next is adjournment?
We are adjourned.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.